I'll call this Norwood City Council meeting to order. If everyone can please rise for a moment of reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we call the roll this evening, we will be swearing in a new member of Norwood City Council. For those of you who were watching the previous meeting, Candace Winterbauer, Ward Two, resigned from her position. And the Central Committee of the Norwood Democratic Party met and they appointed Mr. John Moore. And at this time, Mr. Moore, if you want to stand up here, we will go ahead and administer this oath of office. All right. Please raise your right hand. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, John Moore, do solemnly swear.
To abide by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To abide by the Constitutions and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Norwood.
And to execute the duties of my office.
And to execute the duties of my office.
As Norwood Council, Ward Two, to the best of my ability.
As Norwood Council, Ward Two, to the best of my ability.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
And in a manner which demonstrates the trust.
Which has been placed in me by the citizens of the City of Norwood.
Which has been placed in me by the citizens of the City of Norwood.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right. If you can, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franson?
Here.
Mrs. Hoover?
Here.
Ms. Royce?
Here.
Mrs. Bowling? Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Curtin?
Here.
Mr. Braden?
Here.
We have six of the seven members present this evening. Moving on to amendment of the agenda, we have several. The first is to remove the DEI Advisory Board Committee reports from December 4th and January 8th. We are adding a revised, it really is a typo, last page of ordinance M1. And that was just noting that the year, we're updating the year, it said 2022 on the form. It obviously is 2025. And the other is to add a special presentation to precede Mr. McCabe's special presentation, and that would be by Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese. Mrs. Franson?
I move that we amend the agenda as stated.
Motion by Mrs. Franson to amend the agenda as stated. Mr. Moore?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover?
I just wanted to share that the DEI Advisory Board minutes are done. We just need signatures on them, and we haven't been able to meet due to illness for the last few weeks. So that's why they keep getting bumped. They are done, we're just waiting on signatures.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Curtin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to special presentations. All right. We will, at the moment, go ahead and move on to Chief Tom McCabe with the Norwood Fire Department.
Good evening. Perfect, thank you. Thanks for having me. It's always nice to be able to stand up in front of you and kind of give you a bird's eye view of what's going on with the Fire Department, especially for the last fiscal year 2024. This was a composite then last year. What's nice about this picture is it's only changed by a little bit. We had one person who left the department for a career opportunity at another department in the Coquett, Dayton area. We had two additions and then one subtraction who resigned and took a job with Cincinnati. So we're relatively stable in terms of who we are. So currently staffed at 52 positions. One short, we'll have a hiring process that's ongoing. We should have that filled relatively quickly. Three platoons, 16 members on each platoon, they work 24/48. And then we have a daily shift minimum of 13 people per 24-hour shift. Our administrative team consists of myself, the Assistant Chief, we have a staff captain who's really in charge of the training of the department, and then a bureau clerk who is in charge of the fire inspectors, and administrative assistant Kelly Brown who makes sure I'm doing what I'm supposed to do. She's the glue that keeps the Fire Department together, for sure. Real quick to start our chain of command, basically I'm at the top, Assistant Chief who reports the name, and operationally they all go up through him to my office. So you saw this last year, it hasn't really changed too much, our employee load, you look at it, we like to see us more balanced. We kind of had a hiring freeze back in the early 2010, 11 and 12. That's why you see these numbers. That'll start to kind of adjust as we lose so 20-plus members. We have about 12 who could retire any day, they're not planning on it. We have one expected retirement this year, and then another one definitively next year. You'll start to see this start to change a little bit over the next few years. So our incident information, this is what a lot of people always want to know about, what are we doing in terms of responses, our response times, and how are we doing as a department? So typical questions asked, average response time last year, 3 minutes 17 seconds. You'll see that two-second increase from the year before, largely just depends on where the runs come from, but that's still well below the national standard. You enjoy a very quick, prompt, rear service in your Fire Department. Most common run type, as usual EMS. EMS is our largest, about 70% of our call volume. 66% of that is generally BLS or basic life service, and 33% of those are paramedic-level calls or advanced life service. This is an important one, and this is where redundancy built into your Fire Department is so important. And talk about overlapping calls, how often do we get calls on top of another call? And it's basically 32% of our calls come on top of another run scene. So every third run, basically, you're going to get the fourth run running on top of the third. And so very, very luckily for us, those are typically just the EMS responses. It's very rare to have a fire call on top of a fire call, because those are the most manpower-dependent. Mutual aid, it's always a topic, you know, are we doing our best we can with mutual aid, utilizing the resources around us? We received 127 mutual aid calls, but we've given it 112. So that is really the definition of mutual. We work really well with our area neighboring departments. Busiest time of day for calls, surprisingly, lunchtime. The hours between 11:00 and 1:00 for us are our busiest, call volume slowest is about between 4:00 AM and 6:00 AM in the morning. And a busier day, unfortunately, no, they're pretty much all about standard. Our run volume is about 13, 14 runs per 24-hour period, and there's not really a day that prefers them. So a lot of Fire Department talk about fire loss, we don't do that. We talk about dollars saved in terms of property saved. 2024 year was a lesser year in terms of fire volume. I think last year, in 2023, we had a fire save of about $5 million. Last year was 2.75. So still significant savings in terms of economic impact to our corporate citizens and to, of course, our residents with their homes. So our total incident numbers, Medicaid 2 made almost 3,000 runs, Medic 282 made 850, Engines made 1,509, as you can see, and 616. A total of responses of 6,811, down about 100 runs from the year prior. So you never know, run volume, as our population does, it begins to increase with more and more development. We think we'll see that increase a little bit, but nothing significant, we don't think. Services provided, you guys are well-versed in that, I'm sorry. EMS, that's our bread and butter, we do a lot of EMS calls. You're lucky in the fact that we run two paramedic ambulances, and the two fire engines are also paramedic service. So we carry all the equipment required to provide that first line of paramedic care, no matter what's going on. If the ladder truck gets to you on an EMS run, you still have good care, it's not set up for ALS just because it doesn't make that many EMS runs. Fire suppression, that was the origination of this Fire Department in terms of why we exist, there's an ordinance on the book that actually establishes the Norwood Fire Department, and that was the reason. Fire prevention, obviously, we invest in fire prevention efforts to keep our fire experience low, and we do that through interventions at the school, trying to make sure kids are understanding what starts fires. But fire safety inspections is the big thing, and we'll see a slide on that here. Do hazmat mitigation, we have two large DoD contractors or chemical companies within our community, they're excellent corporate citizens, we work really well together with them in terms of how we operate and how we can support each other in an emergency at those locations. Hydrant maintenance, we've got over 545 fire hydrants in the city, and they're touched at least once in the spring and at least once in the winter, but generally speaking, the winter are touched about three or four times. So we have a good handle on what's going on with our hydrants. A big shout out to Clint Zimmerman and Jimmy Grubbs at Phone Works, they are our partners in terms of making sure that we maintain our hydrants. In general, we have less than 110 fire hydrants that are out of service on a regular basis. A lot of times that's just due to supply chain issues or not being able to get parts. Hose testing, we test three miles of hose every year. That's how much fire hose we have at the firehouse. SCBA maintenance, the air packs, the guys wear, we do that all in-house, it saves the city or taxpayers over $12,000 annually if we had to contract that out. Incident reporting, but we do apparatus maintenance, pump maintenance, pump testing, we inspect our personal protective equipment, on and on. We do a lot of those things that some places actually send out. We do send out some things that we can't actually do our own pump testing, we have to have that certified by outside agents in. And fire safety inspection is a big deal, right? We do over 2,000 code enforcement activities every year. That's 249 permit inspections, those are actually required by law of the State of Ohio, those get inspected, and they pay a state mandated permit fee to the city, doesn't recoup the cost, but helps offset a little bit. The 431 non-permitted inspections, those are your businesses, your churches, they get done annually. We upped that from four years ago, we were doing them every other year, that unit is doing them every year now. 112 monthly family residential inspections, so that's your buildings that are seven units or higher, get inspected every year. 117 college rentals, so this is important. We're one of the few departments to do this, so we're starting to see some pushback from some of the owners in terms of giving us access to do these. And it's an important piece because for us, these are communities or groups of people who aren't thinking about fire safety. They, you hear about it on news, so they're high-profile winners and hasn't happened. We've been very lucky, in the last decade, we've only had one serious college rental fire, and that was starting on the outside, wasn't on the inside. So we take that very seriously, and we appreciate the support from the Law Department helping us navigate some of those relationships because it became difficult. So and then, of course, we've got re-inspections of those inspections, we do adoption inspections mandated by the State of Ohio, lots of pre-construction meetings lately, with all the development going on, which is a good thing for the city, but also it allows the Fire Department to have a say in terms of what's going to go on in these places and how can we best operate and respond to them. So and we also had 16 fire investigations internally in this city, but also one of our inspectors is part of the Hamilton County Fire Investigative Unit and supports that as a mutual aid. We, kind of like we have SWAT members in the Police Department, and we've got some technical rescue guys in the Fire Department, one of our inspectors supports that agency as well, and we utilize them internally here in Norwood. So the budget, so an urban area like Norwood, typically you'll see public safety eat up about 66% of the budget in Norwood last year, and these are actual expenditures, not the actual what was budgeted for. Between police and fire, it was about 62% of the budget. So right on that number in terms of your usual C in an urban environment. So Norwood Fire Department, we're manpower-intensive, right? Labor costs a lot of money, so we have to, that's what you'll see. We've done a really good job, back in the day, it was about 98% of our budgetary costs was labor, and then we kind of tried to fill in the rest of whatever we could do. We're down to about 90, 91% of our budget labor costs. So we're doing well, we're doing well with that. The city administration has been very good in terms of helping us make plans for expenditures, but also with that, we're very mindful of our money, and last year we returned about $650,000 back to the city coffers. Part of that was an ambulance that wasn't on time, part of that was PNI, that was a lot before for a purchase we just didn't do, and you'll see us come asking for that, of course, in the future, because we do have some capital expenditures that are up. But we're very mindful of taxpayer dollars, and we're trying to be very thoughtful in terms of how we spend those. So talk about our strengths, the Fire Department's strengths, really, we've got a very highly-trained workforce, over 7,000 hours of continuing education and training and drilling occurred in 2024 from your Fire Department. And mentally dedicated employees, tenured fire officer group, I was doing the numbers again, we have 12 fire officers, and just in fire officer years, we have over 125 years of fire officer experience. But that, coupled that with our normal firefighting experience, that's 300 hours or 300 years of experience. And we're going to lose our highest tenured employee next year, he's going to retire, Captain Brett Cardavellis, he's got over 35 years in the Fire Department, and he'll retire out next year, and he's had over 20 years of officership, so that's, that'd be a tough institutional loss of knowledge for us. And then, you know, like I said before, in terms of, we maintain constant physical awareness, we're really, really hard to make sure we know where we're at to the penny on a daily basis. We like to audit our own books to make sure our expenditures are lining up with the auditors' own books as well, and we appreciate that relationship. They've really done a nice job in terms of engaging us and allowing us to ask questions as needed. This is your dedicated employees. So this group spends a lot of time, not only just in the Fire Department, doing things like the American Red Cross Smoke Detective Blitz, or we're doing things like helping citizens that may have been found to be down on their luck, but they also have a charity in their off-duty time, they expend thousands of dollars to Norwood Knott Bowl, they sponsor multiple lunches at the senior center for the seniors, they're engaged in the community on a regular basis, they do a pickleball tournament, the MDA. These people bleed Norwood through and through, and it's really impressive to see in terms of what they do to give back to the community. So this is the same slide I had last year, except there's some changes to it, right? All the color is different, the rest of the slide is the same, and that's a testament to what we're doing in terms of taking care of our weaknesses. Aging Firehouse, we'll talk about that a little bit, and we're starting the planning process of making some adjustments to it. It was built in 1974, sure wish we could get a wall stretcher, stretch that thing out a little bit, but, you know, we're trying to do the best we can. And we talked about the impact of a lack of adherence to a fleet replacement program. We are one purchase away from having that fleet replacement program totally in place and ready to be managed for whoever comes after us, and that'll be an important testament in terms of the viability of the Fire Department. Strategic plan for the Fire Department, we're working on, we've gotten quotations to have it done, we're also seeing about having it done maybe in-house with support of maybe like a fifth or third foundation. So that will be something that will be my, when my feathers in the cap before I retire, we'll have that done and put out. And then, lack of a dedicated training facility, this, you'll see at the end too, talk about what you can do to help us in terms of envisioning a public and private partnership, we've been really, really working hard on this. Our first one that we thought maybe had some possibilities last year, we brought this to you, kind of just died out, fizzled out, we actually have something that we're about 99% done, it's the completion of ironing out the details, and hopefully bringing a partnership to you guys to say, hey, this is something that one of our corporate citizens is willing to do, to host, and let's make it happen, because for us, where we get dinged in our insurance audits over every four or five years, it's our ability to rely training, rely fire training. And the lack of diversity within the workforce, we continue to work at that. We had a historic hire last year, who unfortunately has resigned to go to Cincinnati, but it's in place, we're trying to make those adjustments. It's an important piece to us to make sure that our Fire Department is as reflective as possible of the community we serve. How can you help, right? So we talked about the Fire Department, I think this is going to be a long-term discussion. It may not even finish up while you're in your term, while the mayor's in his term, this is something that needs to be thought about, really from a planning perspective, thoughtful in terms of how it's potentially financed. And it may not be just a Fire Department, maybe a public safety facility, you have to really think about what that looks like in the long term. As that building sits, it's great bones, it's workable, we'll be able to make some improvements for it in the short-term future, but really, we identify some of the things that we're looking at, and we're like, okay, maybe we should think about a 10-year plan down the road, and we'll start having those conversations. Fleet purchasing, enormously important, right? We've got new ambulances coming for delivery this year, we ordered the fire engine last year, which I was down in Florida last week to do the pre-construction meeting on it, we'll take delivery of that, believe it or not, October of 2027. And the ladder truck, hopefully you'll see me coming to you guys with a debt instrument for this year to order that, because it's about a four-year delivery time on a ladder, and we are desperate for it. Luckily, in discussions with city administration, really trying to thoughtfully plan this out, what's nice about the way we're doing purchasing now is, even though we're financing it, by the time it actually comes in, they're almost paid off. And so that means that service life, it's already paid for. And so, you know, the money we're putting into it in preventive maintenance, we're not carrying large interest, being thoughtful in terms of how we structure these deals to save taxpayer dollars. National prices gone up, and this is last year's increase, they just did a newer component, I don't have updated numbers, but I'm sure it wasn't cheaper. This is what you should see, when you guys start seeing the plans come out, something similar in terms of capital investment within the Fire Department, doesn't have to be that exact number, we, when we do our planning and we send our budgets, we send over a 10-year plan to the mayor's office, so we can say, hey, this is what we think is going to be needed in the next 10 years. Usually years one through four are rock solid in terms of pricing, what we anticipate, year five, now, we're starting to think, these are maybes, should we have some conversations about it, should we have that in the planning talks about what this could be? But it also gives us an item that we go back and reprice every year in terms of, we think this is what the price is going to be at this time. So this is 2025, obviously, the FRP is going to come out soon, 2026, you know, those are big numbers when you look at it, but it's an investment in being able to provide services to citizens. So how else can you help? If you're asked to participate in a stakeholder discussion, or if you want to come visit, Councilman Moore, we always invite our new members to come over to the Fire Department for a tour around. You've had the luxury of being over once before for a podcast, right? But we always encourage all our new members to come over and have a one-on-one, take a look around, have coffee with the work crew, and just talk about the issues that they think they face, and also with the administration, and we can kind of tell you where we're at and what we're doing. The open possibilities, public, a public-private partnership is a kind of a newer concept in government agencies, I don't know that Norwood's ever done one before, I've not really been involved in it, but that's going to be huge for us, if we can pull this off. And I always say this, you know, the Fire Department, capital planning is tough, right? And when we're looking at revenue, we do revenue sharing with, or we do billing for EMS, and what one way you could do to help offset some of that is just earmark any EMS billing into a capital fund for fire. Even if it's just ambulances, you could just turn that into a regenerative ambulance fund, that's something you could consider. Questions? Nothing? You guys learned a lot last year, huh? I guess that, it's expensive, the mayor, safety director, and I have been really thoughtfully planning out capital purchasing, and hopefully the current iteration of the FRP holds true. I'll be over to talk about some of those purchases, because we'll need to start running some of those through in terms of either debt instrument or just giving authorization for the purchase through a government contract, so. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our next presentation, Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Well, good evening, everyone, mayor, council members, and residents. Thank you for having me today. Let me first of all say that our board is certainly committed to Norwood, and we work on several projects, community planning grants and stormwater, and when I leave, I'll probably end up going to Kroger's and spend more money in Norwood. But this week, last week, we were, we had our Black History Program, and we honored different leaders from our great county, and we were so excited to honor your home right here, and Women's Month is coming up, so this is a special date that she will get available to you. So I would go and put my glasses on. All right, Hamilton County Board Commissioners, proclamation recognizing Councilwoman Susan Hoover. Whereas Susan Hoover is a dedicated mental health therapist and long, lifelong volunteer whose steadfast commitment to community service and advocacy has profoundly impacted countless individuals. Whereas originally from Rochester, New York, Susan became a proud member of this region after attending Earlham College and later moving to Cincinnati, demonstrating and enduring dedication to education, social service, and community well-being. Whereas she devoted over a decade to cancer family care, providing mental health therapy for cancer patients and their families. In 2009, she expanded her impact by establishing a private practice in Mount Lookout where she continues to serve her community. Whereas in response to the challenges of COVID-19, Susan answered the call to public service, making history in 2019 as the first person of color elected to Norwood City Council at large. Whereas now in her second term, Susan has been a catalyst for social and economic progress, securing over $4 million in grants for vital projects and fostering an inclusive community, where she has led efforts to preserve Norwood's history, securing a historic marker for Marsh Park, establishing an MLK Day of Service, and advocating for the recognition of the Norwood Mall, a sacred indigenous burial site. Susan has advanced diversity and equity and inclusion. She's collaborated with local police and fire departments to enhance diverse recruitment, which you just heard about a minute ago, at passing an anti-discrimination ordinance protecting LGBTQIA+ residents from housing discrimination. She has engaged residents through community conversations, voter registration initiatives, and partnerships with local organizations, demonstrating her unwavering commitment to empowering the citizens. Whereas a member, she's a member of the OKI Regional Board of Directors, Susan champions environmental sustainability, expanding recycling initiatives, and establishing a warming shelter right here in Norwood. Now therefore, vehicle claim that the Hamilton County Commissioners extend their deepest appreciation to Susan Hoover for her tireless service to the community of Hamilton County, and be affirmed proclaim that the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners of Ohio does hereby proclaim, get this date down, everybody, it's a holiday here, Saturday, March 1st, 2025, as Councilwoman Susan Hoover Day in all of Hamilton County. Okay, now we can take a drink. Okay, we'll have to have a party in Norwood.
All right, moving on to requests to address council, we do have three. The first is Wayne Allen Stanton III.
Hello, I'm here again. I just want to, first name...
I just want to, first thing, I just want to address the three council members that showed up to Sonny Bishop James' get-together on Sunday. You guys took the time out of your day to show your appreciation. I'm not going to say the names, you guys know who you guys are. Even though, one, I felt like got their feathers ruffled a little bit. I was trying, it was, does it seem like she had some, some ill, ill thoughts on why it was being held? That's just my own perspective. But I'm just going to get on to what I normally talk about. Peyton C. Williams, badge number 225, K-9 handler Ramos and his dog Bayou, Sergeant Devers and Chief Dwayne. They violated my rights. I've come up here many, many times and I just want to say, I do not hate or dislike police officers or any law enforcement. I, I respect them to the fullest. I just dislike bad cops. And I'm not saying these guys are bad people or bad cops. They just made a bad decision the day they stopped me and violated my rights and the oath that they sworn to uphold. And my thing is, I feel like you guys are going to be, you guys are held just as accountable because I'm coming and telling you guys that these guys violated multiple rights, like my First Amendment, because I tried to video them doing what they were doing. They put me in, Sergeant Devers put me in handcuffs instantly. No, for no reason, he put me in handcuffs. They searched my car for no reason. They called the dog for no reason. They arrested me for no reason. And I'm coming and I've been addressing you guys and it just seems like you guys don't care about my rights or maybe nobody's rights. I don't know, maybe just your family's rights or your rights, but everybody has rights. You know what I mean? It's the, the most high put the Constitution in set and that's what it is there for. The Constitution is the law of the land. Like there is no other that goes above that. So when I come up here and this is probably like my sixth time and I still haven't heard not a peep from anybody, nobody wants to talk to me, nobody wants to address what I'm talking about. You know, it's, it's really disrespectful, not just to me, to the community, because you're saying that you don't care if they go out and violate their rights either. Basically, that's what I get from that. But I, I just would really appreciate if somebody would step up and try to, like, everybody likes good acknowledgement and like good things said about them. But when it comes down to, we're all human, we mess up, we, we make mistakes. But it's not the mistake that makes us, it's what we do after the fact. And I feel like after the fact, there is nothing done. Like it was nothing to even be said and I, I mean, you guys have, you guys can get the body camera footage. I got my own footage on my camera before he, before he put cuffs on me illegally to stop me from recording him, like, you know? But when it comes down to it, all this really doesn't matter. You know what matters is your conscience and you know who's going to really judge? Everybody is God, like, and that's the, that's the utmost and the most important thing. Like who cares if anybody else knows? God knows, God knows everything. All, all the good and bad that is being spread out, like things can be covered up. I mean, I, I'm not a perfect person, but that's what's made me into the man I am today and I'm proud to be the man I am today. Maybe not the things that I've done in the past, but I can own up to that and say I made mistakes. So I'm just wondering why you guys can't, or why the police department can't man up and say that they made a mistake, maybe even apologize or acknowledge that they made a mistake? Like that's what really like makes, makes the difference. Like I said, it's not the mistakes you made, it's what you do afterwards. And from what I see, you guys think nothing was wrong. Like, you know what I mean? So I just wish one of you guys come talk to me. Like I, I'd appreciate it. Like I, I'm civil, I'm not disrespectful in no means. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Our next request to address council is Peterson Mingo.
Good evening. That was timed just right. I was getting ready to get him to go to the bathroom, but. But happy to see each and every one of you here. I'm basically just so much excited about the progress I've seen in Norwood. I love Norwood, you love me, even if I am a Cleveland Brown fan. I know things are going to get better day by day, day by day. There's a lot of conflict in a lot of different neighborhoods, but I think that Norwood is one of the ones that you don't see a lot of conflict. There's no neighborhoods fighting against neighborhoods. There's no gangs here, no gangs there. And the buildings that are being put, I didn't even know they had a building way down on Sherman that, wow, this is going to rival everything in Hamilton County. I hope that I can get free meals there occasionally. I'll be basically your best advertisement in the city. Everybody knows I prefer only the good food. And so I'm going to be on your side and everything because what benefits you would benefit us. I just give you greetings from our church family. We're very satisfied with the decision that God gave to move us here in Norwood. And we're not, not going to just be part of the city, we're going to be into the city. Everywhere you look, you're going to see us. Everywhere you think, you're going to think about us. When you drive by our building, you're not going to be able to help yourself, you're just going to stop and just start blowing your horn and keep going, you know? And so what I'm doing just here with a message of love, a message of cooperation and together we can do all kinds of things. I'm just so excited about everything here, everything. And I thank God for bringing us here. I'm looking at the clock, three minutes, wow, I can get some time I can give to somebody else. Because it, it doesn't take long to just say thank you. And I thank you for walking me must to this community. And people were telling us all kinds of things, but we have been witness anything but love here. We're all in the same boat and I say this continually that my family of me have came over 1,000, 100 years ago on a slave ship, yours might have came on the Santa Maria, the Nintah, the Pinter, whatever, but guess what? We all in the same boat now. And so we're roaring together, we're growing together and this is going to be one of the best relationships that we've ever had. And thank you for your time. I'm going to run out. You know, I'm 73 years old, so I know who the restroom is. I checked that out when I first got here.
Thank you. All right, the next request? You know you don't get those extra two minutes. Don't ask. So the next request to address council is Bishop Sonny James.
To God be all the glory. I am standing before you today, excited for a whole lot of reasons. On Sunday, we hosted the very first meeting with a whole lot of leaders from across the state, across the county. Many of you may have seen it on one of the channels and I'm really excited. I want to just say, the Bible tells us to give honor to whom honors due. I don't know if the chief is still here, but I want us to give our fire chief a round of applause. What a phenomenal job they have done in Norwood. Sunday, I brought together some of our most prolific leaders, community after community. Most of you have heard of what happened in Lincoln Heights. Well, we have property in Lincoln Heights. My father-in-law, who was one of the former mayors there, built a home that now my 13-year-old daughter will, will own. And I've been getting so many phone calls from people who were just terrified. And they said, Bishop, what, what, what are we doing about this? And I just felt compelled and led and so I reached out to our peers and they showed up and came and I challenged them and they knew they were coming to be challenged. Well, those that RSVP'd knew that they were coming to be challenged. You see, people like me stand before people like you and yell and scream and shout and people always saying, what is his problem? What's going on? And my biggest concern has always been some of the outbursts that you just saw in Lincoln Heights. But what happened on the seventh is not so bad. It's what happened this past weekend after the residents in Lincoln Heights declared a truce and they would put their guns away. Because when you traveled on the streets of Lincoln Heights, you saw the brothers on the block loaded and ready to go. And yet hours later, the hate crime folks came back. My biggest concern, Norwood, Ohio, has always been, not my neighborhood, and you've heard me say this over and over again. So Charmaine McGuffey, our sheriff for Hamilton County, she was very busy and she said, Bishop, I'm not able to make it. Then a day later, she reached back out and said, wait, I'm sending three of my top brass. And then the day before, she thought about it and she was out of town with her, a sheriff's training. And she thought about it and she said, Bishop, this is way too important. I'm coming back to Cincinnati to be with you all in person. We had representatives from the NAACP, the Urban League, city council members in Woodland, Lincoln Heights. And I'm so proud to be able to say that when I challenge those that are present, Mr. Bonzel, Mr. Braden, Susan Hoover were in the audience. And when I asked everyone, I challenged him, I said, if it's going to be, it's up to me. We can no longer just look for answers outside of ourselves. And I was so happy to see Mr. Braden with his hand sticking straight up. If it's going to be, it's up to me. And it almost brought tears to my eyes to see our very first Democratic prosecutor in 92 years, Connie Pilage prioritizing to come. And people were challenging me and they said, Bishop, where's Norwood? And I said, don't worry, easy. We've called boycotts now. You don't understand what a boycott is? That's when you say we're not shopping and spending money in your business. Target has now sent out a letter, a notice to say, wow, we better take notice now. The black dollar really does make an impact. But my biggest concern is when some of my peers say, Bishop, Norwood still doesn't respect you. They'll invite everybody else, but they won't come for you. We need to boycott Norwood. Ladies and gentlemen, those that were here and those that were there, heard me publicly say, not on my watch. Because as Pastor Mingo said, we're doing better in Norwood and I'm so proud. I am your biggest cheerleader, but we've got to continue to work together. There are challenges that will be made right here in Norwood and the only thing we're asking is answer the challenge. Let's make Norwood the best community in the country. God bless you all. Thank you, Mr. Braden, for meeting with us and clergy will be leading the way to make us better.
Thank you. Moving on to requests of standing committees of council, we have the Housing, Health, Environment and Public Safety Committee report from February 5th. We don't have that one.
No, sir, apologies. Apologies.
All right.
I missed that one.
Motion to move that to the next meeting. Mrs. Fransen?
I make a motion that we move that to the next meeting. Sorry.
Is there a second? Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is an ordinance of the City of Norwood, Ohio authorizing non-union employee pay rates. Mrs. Fransen?
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mrs. Fransen to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mr. Gerton?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gerton. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Norwood, Ohio authorizing non-union employee pay rates. An ordinance of the City of Norwood, Ohio authorizing non-union employee pay rates. An ordinance of the City of Norwood, Ohio authorizing non-union employee pay rates.
Thank you. Ms. Royce?
I move we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Ms. Royce to pass the ordinance, is there a second? Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item. This is an ordinance concerning agreement with ODOT for FY 2025 urban paving project for a portion of US 22 Montgomery Road, the City of Norwood, with an emergency provision. Ms. Royce?
I move we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Ms. Royce to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mrs. Fransen?
Just to make this very clear to everyone in the audience, this is us approving the complete repaving of Montgomery Road from north, the north part of Norwood past Holy Trinity, all the way down to just north of Dana Avenue. So all of those lovely potholes you see on Montgomery Road will at least temporarily be a thing of the past very soon. I say this because there are Xavier students in the room who are very familiar with Montgomery as well as, you know, everyone who lives in Norwood. So it's very exciting and I just want to give a lot of credit to the administration for, for doing all the work for this. It's been a long time in the making, several years. So this doesn't happen overnight. It had several years of negotiating with ODOT. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Ms. Royce, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Final ordinance concerning agreement with ODOT for the fiscal year 2025 urban paving project for a portion of US 22 Montgomery Road in the City of Norwood with an emergency provision. Final ordinance concerning agreement with ODOT for the fiscal year 2025 urban paving project for a portion of US 22 Montgomery Road in the City of Norwood with an emergency provision. Final ordinance concerning agreement with ODOT for the fiscal year 2025 urban paving project for a portion of US 22 Montgomery Road in the City of Norwood with an emergency provision.
Thank you. Mr. Braden?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to pass the ordinance, please.
Motion by Mr. Braden to pass the ordinance. Mr. Gerton?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gerton. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the last ordinance on the agenda, sorry, resolution. This is a resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from Fund 1001-0815-57300 to pay for unassigned transportation costs of $7,711.04 for fuel already provided by World Fuel Services, Inc., DBA, World Connect, and declaring an emergency. Ms. Royce?
I move we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Ms. Royce to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Mrs. Fransen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fransen. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from Fund 1001-0815-57300. Fund 1001-0815-57300 to pay for unassigned transportation costs of $7,711.04 for fuel already provided by World Fuel Services Incorporated, DBA, World Connect, and declaring an emergency. Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from Fund 1001-0815-57300 to pay for unassigned transportation costs of $7,711.04 for fuel already provided by World Fuel Services Incorporated, DBA, World Connect, and declaring an emergency. Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from Fund 1001-0815-57300 to pay for unassigned transportation costs of $7,711.04 for fuel already provided by World Fuel Services Incorporated, DBA, World Connect, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Fransen?
I move we pass the resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Fransen to pass the resolution. Is there a second? Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fransen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to administration reports. Mayor Schneider?
Let me hit the green button.
Thank you.
I was going to just say progress and not, but then as I sit here and I listen to, as the meeting goes on, we're privileged. Dr. Kathryn Robinek is from Xavier is here and has a bunch of the students from Xavier University. Welcome and we're very glad to see you here. And James and I were talking about, it's nice to have a little extra energy at a council meeting. We appreciate the applause and just the, you know, the smiles and frowns of being engaged. We meet a lot, so come to these meetings whenever you can. I thought it was funny, the comment about Montgomery Road, we're working on Montgomery. I'd like to say that they're going to start paving this spring and getting, you know, everything, but it takes a while to make these things happen. So a little bit of patience. But our public works department is doing a good job at filling holes, filling those potholes as quick as they can and trying to get things going in the right direction. I'd like to recognize that we have two candidates that are, and when I talk about time and treasure, treasure is any time that you are willing to give to your community and be away from your family to help your community. So John, I welcome you to councilman Moore, I welcome you to city council and appreciate you taking the time, putting the effort out and sharing your treasure. And then there are two other candidates that are in the audience, which is Ryan Beck and Chad Eaton are in the audience also, taking time away to potentially, you know, look at what this is all about. So we've, three of them? Somebody else?
Danielle Sullivan.
Okay, Danielle Sullivan also. I don't recognize you, but Danielle, welcome again. It is time and treasure and it's time away from your family. Now Susan, as you know, an honored participant and council member, her family is here and it's great to see your family here also. So that is great. What an honor. I mean, absolutely, Susan, you're doing such a bang up job and keeping things going in the right direction. Then I want to talk about the people that we have in this room in the back row and in the front row. Because as a mayor and as a council member sitting here, we didn't have this full seating up here. For many, many years, the mayor wasn't sitting in this chair a lot. The auditor was not here very much. The treasurer was not here. I mean, it's really incredible to see this whole area up here filled with people. And part of it is that, quite frankly, all of us get along and we all work well together and we're trying to move the city forward. And that's, it's something, it's, I would say it's refreshing, but I feel like it's been the five years that I've been here, we've had pretty good participation. Then even in the back of the room, we have our HR director sitting back there. I think our new deputy auditor is sitting back there. The safety service director is in the house also. So there's a lot of powerful people in here, not just to recognize all of the good council members that we have. Rodney Rogers is sitting here, is a longtime member of the historical society, keeping a, you know, he's keeping the historical stuff going. But he was a president of the historical society for many, many years. So it's, it is just great to see all of these people here. I really appreciate everybody's participation. Somebody, somebody, I think it was Bishop James said, where's Norwood? And I think when Bishop James, when people say, where's Norwood to him, he said, I'm right here. Because he's, he is pulling these things together and he's representing the city of Norwood at times. He's one of the community members that steps up. And just like if we were there, where's Norwood? I'm right here, we're right here. We're taking care of the business of Norwood on a regular basis. So I'm very happy with that. Let's see, what was the last thing I had on here? The chief, the fire chief's report, it's great to have his annual report each time. One of the things he talked about, and I wrote a note down real quick, 545, 545 fire hydrants out there. And I've been noticing and some people have pointed out like, our fire hydrants don't look very well maintained. We've got good, we've got a good fire system, we've got good fire hydrants, but we've got to do some work. So we're going to have to do, if we put seasonals on, doing some PM maintenance and preventive maintenance on the fire hydrants and getting them looking good. We're going to need 50, they get about 12 weeks, we're going to have to get 54 done in a week. That's about six a day. So hopefully this summer, we get a couple of good seasonals and they clean up those fire hydrants and get things going. But there's a lot of, a lot of really interesting, good stuff going on. I know the Elm Avenue, I can't let that drop because that was one of the things that Chris Kelch ran and pushed and pushed the administration on and pushed them harder. And he'd call me and push. But the Elm Avenue project is moving forward. I think the only thing that is pending out there is one piece of property that is owned by Hamilton County that they're going, I think they're going to turn over to the city of Norwood for this project. But that's one of the only things that's hanging out there. And we'll see, we're going to go out to contract on that and that project's going to move forward. So a lot of really good stuff going on. I really thank all of the people that are here for all the time and effort that they're putting into, new and old and maybe future. So thank you very much. And that's probably more than I should have said. I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mayor Schneider? All right, Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, I think that you don't give yourself enough credit for the Elm Avenue project. Like, you know, there were people down there that were, you know, chirping about it and talking about it, but you, you, your staff, I mean, you all made it happen. So I think you get a very good, very, very much credit for that. So I also just want to welcome all the Xavier students that are here today and everybody else that's here. So it really is wonderful to have a full house when they're not here to yell at us. So it's, it's great, it's great. So thank you all so much for being here. You're welcome back anytime. The, so for tax season, we're working hard preparing the tax office for it. So just as a reminder, our municipal tax deadline is April 18th. That does create some confusion because the IRS tax deadline is April 15th, but we give a couple of extra days just so that you, you know, if you file on the 15th, you don't have to rush down to the city to file. So that'll be that. There's going to be a postcard going out again this year, just reminding residents that, of the tax filing deadline. So you'll kind of check that and see that in your mailboxes too. It should go to every single address, probably late March. The, also want to welcome John Moore to the stage. It kind of feels like you have, it doesn't really feel new. It feels like you've always been here because you've always been in the background, kind of helping a lot of us out. So we definitely appreciate that and looking forward to your insights there. And there's a lot of other stuff to do. So with that, I yield the rest of my time.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bonzel? Mrs. Hoover?
I'm just curious if there's been any update on the cannabis tax situation?
Yep. Okay, I appreciate that. I did actually just get today, like late, right before the council meetings, I found it. But there was a bulletin issued by the Auditor of State today about how cannabis revenue can be used. There is some stuff happening at the state right now. Susan kind of is, you know, somewhat is informed on this for sure. But the state legislature is how, the legislature, how they do quite often, they are looking at or potentially taking revenue that we might be getting from the adult use cannabis tax, which is basically a 10% excise tax, which 36% of that 10% tax is set aside for the home communities that house the dispensaries. We have two of the dispensaries, there's like maybe 150 in the state, maybe a little bit less than that, two of those are here in Norwood. So it's like, it's pretty important for us. I was doing some rough napkin math because I don't have any numbers yet. But I was thinking, I'm thinking that we're going to get somewhere between 150 and maybe $200,000 a year from that if it's not taken from us. So, but there was something that gives me hope though, is because this came out today, the bulletin for the Auditor of State. They're basically, and while we have not received any funds yet, at least Tim, when I asked Tim yesterday, he wasn't aware of it, but we haven't received any checks yet. When we do, this directive kind of basically says that we are allowed to kind of use those as we see fit. So one of the things that's allowed and something that I'm, you know, I personally will be recommending that you all do is, we're allowed to put the money, instead of putting it to the general fund, we can put it into a special fund that's specifically for a specific use. So it's my recommendation, I think it would be great for everybody, and is to put that money into the street fund. So anytime we basically get the cannabis money, because we don't know how long we're going to get it, they can take it next year and take it two years. Putting in the general fund means that we're going to start kind of banking on that for operations and for staffing. Putting it in the street fund or putting in some fund that's dedicated to streets means that we basically are going to be able to use that for, just for street purposes. So I'll be bringing that to finance committee to talk about that. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'll bring it to you too, get your feedback as well. So, but I do think that that is a, it's a question that I've been asking from the beginning about what we can do with that. And I just think it's a responsible thing to do. It's obviously our biggest priority at the city, so.
I think the president has commented on that.
To clarify, please, the streets that would help with the potholes?
Oh, there it is. Out of boredom.
Yeah, no pants. Any other questions for Mr. Bonzel? All right. Mr. Miracle?
Thank you, Mr. President. I get to fuck with that. Just like to share with everyone, next week, our annual audit begins March 4th, 5th and 6th. We'll have auditors in here from JL Ulrich for our annual audit. So that begins next week. This afternoon, we had a meeting with Anna Mary Thomas and Chris McCoy from the Auditor of State's office. We had a riveting discussion regarding Gatsby methods. I'm sure you all wish you were there. So that lasted for about an hour and a half. We do, in all seriousness, have a new Gatsby method this year. Typically, those don't go in effect in the same year, but this one does, so that, I'll have to get up to speed on that. And then also, our financial statements are due by May the 30th. So the state auditor would like to have those reported out to them by the beginning of May. Also, continuing to work on our report on county methods as we discuss in the finance committee meeting every, every month. And then tomorrow, as Mayor Schneider had mentioned earlier, there is a great deal of collaboration between the departments and council here. And we are beginning to meet every week with the treasurer's office, four o'clock on Wednesdays. Council invited to sit in. There are many things that the treasurer's office and auditor's office work on together, sometimes at different ends. So we're going to start meeting together and discuss those and how we can work better together. And also, I'd like to welcome new councilman Moore. Look forward to working with him. And hopefully you'll be on our finance committee. I guess that remains to be seen, but we'll see. So thank you, Mr.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miracle? All right, Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. James brought up the state taking money from the city and rather than start that and never be able to stop, my rant on that, I'll just pass.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Moore? All right. Then we will move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Mrs. Hoover?
I know everyone missed me last week, so I've got, I got extra stuff for tonight. You're welcome. The first, I want to share, the city council survey is still up. It's going to be up for quite a while. We have over 600 respondents so far, but I wanted it to be up on the screen for folks at home so you could screen grab it. We're still looking for folks to respond. So that's just a quick one. The next thing I wanted to share about the ivy abatement, this was fantastic, though we had to reschedule it because the weather was so awful. And then this day, the weather did not look great, but the clouds paused for a moment, the rain let up and we had a really great group, councilwoman Fransen and first baby Cyrus were on hand. And we did a lot of ivy abatement. The reason this is so important is these invasive ivies literally kill our trees and it is a very easy way to save a tree. I stopped counting at 10 trees that I did myself. We did hundreds of trees that day. And we are going to be continuing to do these sort of irregularly. There's a QR code that will link to a Google Doc. You can put your name and address. If you ever think you might want to, join us. Put your name on there and when we're doing it, sorry, you know, next Thursday at four o'clock, we'll send out an email. And if you can come, awesome. If you can't, join us next time. So it's a really great way to help our, our canopy. Next one, please. Oh, this actually, I just got an update yesterday from Congressman, sorry, Landsman, the grant for Doral Field. If you recall, in December, Congress passed a short-term funding bill or continuing resolution that basically put a pause on the community projects. So right now, it's a giant question mark. Either they're going to pass a full year fiscal year 2025 funding bill, which will include our community funding project, or they will pass a different one, which does not include our funding, or they might not pass any government funding, in which case we'd enter a partial government shutdown. So we're not sure yet which is it's going to be. So too early to tell, but want you to know that we are keeping an eye on it because we really want that money for Doral Field. This is very exciting news. I don't know if, if you wanted to share this, Roger, about our Marsh Park marker?
Oh, well, our president.
I'm sorry, Rodney, I'm sorry. Am I allowed to ask him?
Yes, if you want to come to the podium.
Well, what I understand is our president has been working on the wording. And there was a little feedback from the.
We changed a few words.
Changed a few words. And after that, I think we'll just carry right on through. They can only produce so many of these signs each year.
Excuse me, sorry.
And as soon as we get into that queue, we'll have it. And I assume you might want to talk about what kind of ceremony we'll have?
So just for those who don't know, we worked, the historical society and I and another local historian worked to gather over 100 historical markers regarding a park in Norwood that was created in 1923 as a way to keep blacks out of Norwood. It was a really unpleasant time here in Norwood, and was important that we did some recognition around it. So we are, we've got a state historical marker, which is the big bronze sign. It is now, it's been sent off to production.
Oh, it is.
It's been sent off, yep. So in six to nine months, we'll be getting it. It's a, it's a big, it's a big honker. And then we will start having conversations about what sort of ceremony that we want to do to acknowledge the, acknowledge the park.
If you want to see how big it is, there's one of a similar size in front of the high school, which I was lucky enough to help unveil it. Susan will be helping you unveil this one. It was a very strange time in Norwood history. The people have been living there for quite a few years, not necessarily the ones that got moved out, but that house had been occupied by black people for a long time. And the odd thing about it is, that same year, there were a lot of strong KKK organizations in the greater Cincinnati area. Two of the men from that group came to talk to the mayor, and the mayor told them to get out, because he was completely against them. And it was just a really confusing time for, at that time. But hopefully, we'd never have anything like this again. But I don't know if this is a little aside, but the, when I was coming out of PNC Bank, there was a guy dressed, covering his face up and taking videos of everybody. And I know what he was trying to do was just get something started. Because when I asked him, he called me an a-hole, not a pothole. So we always have to be vigilant for things like that. I'm glad that you've put the effort into doing this, and I wish Susan had been here so she could talk. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else under unfinished business?
Real quick, I know that I was sick last council meeting, and there was a little bit of discussion during public comment about the DEI advisory board. And I apologize again for not having the minutes or the reports to the last two meetings, but councilmember Royce and I just jotted down a few of the things that we've done, the board has done since 2022. And this is all, this is a voluntary board, made up of council members, residents, and city employees. And everything that we've done has been a collaboration. Nothing has been one person, which is really exciting. But we did the MLK Day of Service and blood drive. We had over 50 volunteer opportunities through the community. We did that, that was fourth year. We've had two blood drives. We've curated a Black History Month business listing. We've hosted Hispanic Heritage Festival next month, will be, this will be our third year, for the Lydia's House fundraiser, donation drive for Lydia's House, which is transitional housing for women and children. One I'm really proud of is the book discussion of Driving the Green Book, and that was in conjunction with Harriet Beecher Stowe House, the Public Library, the Smithsonian Traveling Exhibit. And I saw Catherine, our librarian here, but I think she slipped out. And the fact that our librarian comes to these meetings is just, I mean, come on, how amazing is that? But we had a really robust conversation about what is the history of Norwood? What is our role in it? How do we want to respond to it? Really challenging, but really beautiful conversations. We also held Norwood's First Pride Market. We're currently working on a historical marker for Norwood Mound. We meet, we try to meet monthly, and we always ask for public comment. So we would love for folks to be involved and be a part. So please know that you're welcome to that. And I believe that's all I have under old business. Oh, it's Girl Scout cookie time. Please, please, they keep popping up, and I keep buying them, so if you could take something off my plate and buy some, that would be awesome.
All right. Any other unfinished business? Mr. Braden.
Well, thank you. Can I, can I ask Ms. Hoover a question, please, through the chair? Or can I get some of them cookies, Ms. Hoover?
Well, I polished off some of the lemonades before the meeting today.
Let's get together, okay? I need to, I need to connect.
They had a pop-up event on floral.
I can connect you.
Oh, she's the.
I can connect you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Anything else under unfinished business?
I'll just.
Ms. Royce?
I'll just add, the next DEI meeting is March 5th at 6:30. And it's usually the first Wednesday of the month. But as Ms. Hoover hinted at, we've all been sick lately. Not me, luckily. But other people have, so we haven't been able to meet. But usually, the first Wednesday of the month at 6:30, usually here, so.
All right.
That's all I had to add.
Thank you. Any new business? Mrs. Franzen?
Yeah, I just wanted to let folks know, we'll be having our finance committee meeting next, not next council meeting, but the council meeting after that at 6:30 before the meeting. I think we had changed it to six, we're changing back to 6:30 unless there's something that is really pressing that we need to spend a lot more time doing. That way, it's easier for Mr. Braden to get there as well, the 6:30. Just wanted to let you know, we didn't have it today because Mrs. Winterbauer, who sat, again, very sad, she resigned. I said, yes, we'll have a meeting, and I never sent out an agenda. So the meeting did not happen, but we were able to eat with, Mr. Gerton and I met with Mr. Miracle just to like chat and catch up on if there's anything new with the fiscal recovery plan. I'm also hoping to make sure that we have everything ready for next month, including any claims that people may have submitted to the city. So if you were really excited for the finance meeting today, I'm so sorry that I, that you missed it.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mrs. Hoover.
A couple of quick things. One, I had the opportunity to speak with Chief Sumner about two things. One, I know that some folks have had some increased concern about ICE and their involvement. We do have a small and growing immigrant population here in Norwood and, and a lovely Hispanic population. And I know that folks have had some concerns about their safety. And in my conversation with Chief Sumner, and I want to read what he said, "Our priority is public safety for everyone in our community regardless of immigration status. We want residents to feel safe reporting crimes and interacting with our officers. Our department does not ask about immigration status when responding to calls or conducting investigations, and are not permitted to stop, arrest, search, or detain individuals solely based on immigration status. We encourage everyone regarding of status to report crimes without fear of immigration consequences." So I just wanted to, to share that. If that has not been your experience, I would love for you to reach out to me personally and safely and privately. But I'm hoping that that is what people are experiencing. The other is the horrible incident that happened to our neighbors to the west with the, with the Nazis. And I think what was most important to me was the response from the greater community in, in being firm in their stance that that is not acceptable in that community, and hate does not belong there. I can tell you that, this is also through Sumner, that our Norwood investigators are in constant contact with Fusion, which is the regional cooperative effort among public safety and health professionals that work to combat potential terrorist activity. So they are in constant contact, they are watching the Facebook, the Twitter, the feeds, the reddits, the, and they're, Norwood is not being mentioned. Norwood is, is safe, and they're, and they're paying close attention to that. One of the bigger concerns is guns being stolen out of cars continues to be an issue. So please, if you are a gun odor, do not leave your gun in a car. And also a reminder that gun locks are free at the police station, free at the police station, and also now at our public library. Everyone should have their firearms locked. I would like to request that the issue of immigration concerns be put perhaps into our law committee, just to see if there is a more robust response that we think that we should, we should have. And then I want to circle back to youth engagement, which is something that we've talked about, and I'm so glad our Xavier students are here. I had the opportunity to go to Xavier with, for a Women in Politics event, and it was fantastic. It was Women in Politics, it was half men, half women. It's smart, engaged, thoughtful. It really gives me hope for our future, so thank you. You do not need to be a politician to sit up here. We have an entomologist, we have a lawyer, we have Sam. Sam is a little bit of everything. I don't know, we can put her in a box, but like, you do not need to be a poli sci major to, to sit up here and make a difference in your community. So in, in that regard, next month, as Women History Month, the Girl Scouts often come and do their flag ceremony. We're hoping to do that March 11th, if that's okay, Mr. President. But I also wanted to see if folks would be interested in doing something a little more enriching for the girls, where I know that, I really wish Ms. Boling was here, she was a member of the YWCA program, where they were, had like a youth council. So I, I would love for us to maybe have a conversation with the, with the girls, or talk about what the agenda looks like, possibly sit with us. I want to see what folks thought about trying to increase their engagement just a little bit. I know the City of St. Bernard actually does a council meeting with the Boy Scouts, and they actually do the whole meeting. That feels like a little bit much, but I love the idea of really trying to have a bigger role for them. And so that's more of a question for the, for the group, what you think about that.
Ms. Royce?
I'm pro letting the Girl Scouts sit up here if they would like.
Yeah.
Mrs. Franzen?
I, I think it'd be great to have both the, the Boy and Girl Scouts, maybe, maybe even like a committee of the whole meeting or something where it's a little more informal, where they could ask questions about stuff. I know it's a little intimidating to come to a full council meeting when you can't really have a back and forth like some of the, the younger kids would probably more like, so. Just something maybe to keep in mind, maybe not next month, but in the future, is my thought.
All right. Which is a perfect segue into a reminder that we have Committee of the Whole Meeting next Tuesday at 6:30. That is our, our standing date is the first Tuesday of the month, 6:30 in council chambers. We do have several of the survey items still on the agenda for discussion, so we will continue, we will continue that next week. Any other new business? We have slides.
Did I forget something? Oh, whoa, that was the Girl Scouts, sorry. That's the civic engagement badges, aren't those cool? Oh, we have chairs. Shirley Chisholm. So this was something else that I heard at, addressed to council, a sense that there aren't seats at the table. And, and the Shirley Chisholm quote is, if they don't give you a seat at the table, we're in a folding chair. But what I would say is that there are seats at the table. Norwood has a generous five-minute address to council. I appreciate that someone brought that up. We always allow for public comment and dialogue at our committee meetings. Our housing committee has hosted several community conversations, where we do outreach to connect the elected officials with residents and police. We've done that in, I think, three wards. Norwood Together, which is a community nonprofit, hosts community get-togethers, and council members, all of us have email addresses. I, probably everyone here has met with a resident. I had, I met a ward four neighbor yesterday for coffee. I had espresso martini, because that's really yummy, and talked about development. So we are here, we are engaged, we want to be engaged, and there's lots of ways. We would like you to join us, so please do.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Moore?
Mr. Here's, hi. I just first wanted to say thank you to everyone here for the, the warm welcome and, and having me here to replace Ms. Winterbauer. It's, it's a great honor, and I look forward to, to working with each of you and, and serving the city. For those of you in the audience or on TV who might not know me, my wife Jessica and I moved here in, in 2018, and we have a three-year-old boy that we're, we're raising here. And when I think about all the families that I see when I drop him off at Norwood Montessori School, and kind of this era of, of kid who's going to get to grow up here over the next 15 years, what an amazing childhood they're going to get to have. And I think it, it hearkens back to when I hear Mr. Mayor talk about his childhood and growing up in Norwood and how amazing it was. You know, I, I hope that that is kind of this, this village that we can have for all the, you know, the young families and the young kids are going to grow up here. So I look forward to working with you all. It's a great honor to be here. It's, it's fun to have some Xavier students here. My day job is as a marketing director at Xavier, and so my whole life is in a three-mile radius, and I'm just really honored to serve this little pocket of the world. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? All right, moving on to communications. First is a letter from Mayor Schneider regarding Mayor's Court fines for January 2025.
Dear Mr. President and council members, enclosed please find, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of January 2025. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Mayor Victor Schneider.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen?
Make a motion that we receive and file the letter.
Motion to receive and file the letter? Is there a second? Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item is a letter from Mr. Miracle regarding the EOM report letters. Mrs. Franzen?
I'll make a motion that we receive and file this letter as if read.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to receive and file the letter as if read. Mr. Braden?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item, letter from Mr. Miracle, and it is a letter to council to approve the Mary Jaeger salary. Mr. Gerton?
Make a motion to file as if read?
Motion by Mr. Gerton to receive and file as if read, and there is also the request in here to approve the salary would have to be made into that motion.
And I, I meant my motion to approve the salary in the, the letter.
So the motion by Mr. Gerton is to receive and file the letter as if read, and approving the requested salary. Is there a second? Mrs. Franzen?
I, I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion?
I.
Mrs. Franzen?
Sorry. I, I did want to know, I didn't know if this is something that we had, what needed to go into executive session to discuss. I apologize, I wasn't sure what the proper way to talk about this was.
Mr. Moore?
So figured I'd be good to ask.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's no need to go into executive session. It would be a, it, it's a valid reason to go into executive session if council wants to have the discussion amongst themselves in that kind of, that kind of a venue. But there's no, there's no requirement that you do.
Mrs. Franzen?
Would it be, I know that we already have a request to go into executive session about another matter. Would it be possible to include this matter in that executive session, or would it be a separate session?
Mr. Moore?
I would, I would do them separately.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Hoover?
I know that there's already a motion standing, but I would like to make another offer to go into executive session. But do we need to vote first?
Unless Mr. Gerton and Mrs. Franzen would remove, table your motion?
I am willing to table my motion.
I'm happy to table my motion, too.
Okay.
So then I would make a motion to go into executive session under ORC 121.22G1 to discuss the appointment and compensation of a public official.
All right, so we have the original motion has been removed, and the new motion by Mrs. Hoover is to enter into executive session per Ohio Revised Code Section 17322. Yes.
21, 121.22G1.
G1. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
All right. Any discussion? Mr. Braden?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just want a quick question, maybe through, to our law director. So does the process mean that we have to go into executive session to discuss this, then come out in executive session, and then re-enter in the executive session to discuss our other issue that we have on, on the agenda this evening?
That is correct. Per, per Mr. Moore, that if this, if council would like to discuss both of these items in executive session, there would have to be two separate executive sessions.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. At this point, council will enter executive session, so everyone other than those elected officials are asked to exit council chambers, and we will let you know when you may enter. All right. Council has now returned from executive session, and we still have the letter on the agenda from Mr. Miracle regarding Mary Jaeger's salary. Mrs. Franzen?
I make a motion that we receive and file the letter and approve the salary.
All right. So that would be as if read?
As if read, apologies, yes.
So motion by Mrs. Franzen is to receive and file the letter as if read and approve Next item on the agenda is a letter from the Safety Service Director regarding a request for executive session.
Dear Council President Gears, I request an executive session at the Norwood City Council Meeting on February 25th, 2025, under Ohio Revised Code 121.22G4, for the purpose of preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. Sincerely, Noah Powers, Safety Service Director.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen?
I will be going to executive session under Ohio Revised Code 121.22G4.
And to receive and file the letter.
Receive and file the letter. Thank you.
Mr. Braden?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Braden. Motion is to receive and file the letter and enter executive session for the reasons stated within the letter. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Council will once again enter executive session. And
So like you need to like give them applause.
I will note that we do have one absent member. Mrs. Franzen?
I make a motion to excuse our absent member.
Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Motion on the floor is to excuse our absent member. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? Ms. Royce?
I will adjourn.
Mr. Gerton?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gerton. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.